Lee Summit is your destination for big city vibes and small town charm. Head to the downtown Lee Summit Farmers Market where local meets fresh. Then grab a cup of coffee, and discover a variety of shops and boutiques just around the corner. Continue the fun in downtown Lee Summit at a retro arcade bar. Discover your new beer at one of our six locally owned breweries. Cool off with some handcrafted cocktails at happy hour. End the night with live music and good company. Lee Summit, Missouri.
Welcome to the Lee Summit Sign Department. We are going to walk you through our process from start to finish. We make signs as needed here. It's not like we just go out into the field and place a speed limit sign here, no parking here. Our traffic engineers, they go through and they'll do field studies. They'll send us down an engineering work order for us to go out, place new signs or remove signs as needed. Coming from the material, our blanks come in and they're just aluminum blanks. We can put our white, our red, our fluorescent yellow-green, whatever. And basically what it looks like is just that there. Throw it up into the roller. And once we got it covered, take it to our work table here. And Tim will cut the corners, cut all the access off to where it's lined up right. As far as the plotter and the software that we use, there's a street name sign there. And he's going to go ahead and print that out on the plotter so you can see the plotter and how it operates and runs. There are standards for the height, even just on letters on the sign blank. Basically what we have on the computer there is it's pretty much set up to those. And it goes through, it's got a very small but sharp needle that goes through and cuts everything out, letter by letter. Once that's done cutting, our next stage would be bringing it over here. Currently picking out the signed letters right now. We call it weeding, or picking, or however you want to call it. Next, putting it on the transfer tape. Then after it's taped, we bring it over to the roller. That's where we apply it to the actual sign blank. And we'll roll it through one time just to get the air bubbles out. And the last stage is basically just taking the transfer tape off the front of it. And there's a finished product of a street name sign. We'll take you out to the field and show you our process that we go through. We're going to go out and follow our sign guys, get something installed for you. This is where we check our underground utilities. Tim, you got AT&amp;T?
AT&amp;T is back here.
EverG, Google, so we should be good to go. We normally put all of our stuff together out in the field. Then once the base is installed, we'll go ahead and put the post in there. We've come up to perfect. And that's how we do it. Simple, quick.
You're invited to discover summer fun. Ride the waves in the wave pool. Jump off the diving boards. Take a dip in the Action River. And slide down the slides at our outdoor water park, Summit Waves. After a day in the sun, experience downtown Lee Summit. Enjoy gourmet pizza and delicious food for lunch. Then, cool down with handcrafted ice cream right around the corner. Summer at the Summit, Lee Summit, Missouri.
Traditionally, we think as police officers, those responding to law enforcement needs within the community. But honestly, we are there to serve our citizens. And our citizens do go into crises, they do have mental health crises, and we're being called to those scenes on a regular basis. In order to help serve those citizens better, we did initiate the Crisis Intervention Team Program. These are officers that are specially trained to de-escalate crisis situations. Recently, we've brought co-responders onto the scene, licensed qualified mental health professionals housed within our police department. And they respond with those officers directly to those scenes where a crisis is occurring so they can interact with that citizen and get them the help they need right there on that scene.
The co-responders are either a bachelor or master level in a behavioral health related field. They wear plainclothes, they don't carry weapons or anything like that.
I have a police radio that I listen to all day. Listen for those keywords, mental health, behavioral health, crisis.
There's a lot of officers that just call for me, I have my own radio number.
I also have the ability to self-dispatch to them. When say 982 is en route.
Officers en route, 914 armed, drawn, ready.
So typically I arrive after they've made it safe. I'll make contact and get kind of the rundown, and then I just kind of jump right in.
Like, hey, you know, my name's Allison, I'm a mental health professional, I'm here to help you. I'm not here to take you to jail or arrest you.
Sometimes, all a person needs is a voice, someone neutral, someone outside that can listen. I do a lot of safety planning, including family, their support network. Who's close to you? If they're home alone, who can come over and hang out with you today? Can we lock away your sharps? Can we put up your meds? Do you need meds? Can we get you over to the urgent care to get you assessed for your medications? Some of them also are like, oh, I'm so glad you came, this made me feel so much better.
Our main goal as co-responders is to, one, get people connected to the services that they need, and also divert from emergency rooms and jails.
And they almost get a different view of the police responding. That lets me know you care and the officers care.
Lee Summit Police, how can we help you?
My husband has...
In 2020, we had 722 mental health related calls for service. 2022, at that time, 1,479. These mental health related calls for service are increasing. How we're responding to that is increasing the number of Crisis Intervention Team officers we have available, as well as the number of co-responders we have available to respond on these calls.
So what I think is important for the community to know about the co-responder program is that we're here, we exist. All you have to do when you call 911 is ask for us. You know, say, hey, I want a co-responder to respond to this crisis, and we'll go. I was really struggling about eight years ago. My personal journey with mental health. And I met some amazing social workers and amazing programs that have helped me get to where I am today. I really couldn't see myself doing anything else. We want to help, and that's what we love to do.
So at a client, we got a call, she had some suicidal ideations, and she really felt that she had nobody. And getting to know her story, and getting to know who comes around and sees you. Well, then we found a support person. And they responded immediately, and we made a plan. I called back and checked on her in an hour, and then I checked on her in two hours. We were able to get her into additional services to where she talks to someone every week or more. I just took a person that really just thought they had nobody, and nobody would show up for them, and show them you do. And you'll be amazed who is in your corner if you just simply say, I need a little help.
Lee Summit has you covered for all of your summer fun. Head to the downtown Lee Summit Farmers Market where local meets fresh. Then grab a cup of coffee, and discover a variety of shops and boutiques just around the corner. Continue the fun in downtown Lee Summit at a retro arcade bar. Discover your new beer at one of our six locally owned breweries. Cool off with some handcrafted cocktails at happy hour. End the night with live music and good company. Summer at the Summit, Lee Summit, Missouri.
Councilmember Hodges.
Thank you. I love where you guys are coming from, you're local and you're all kind of coming together. But where I'm struggling with from the last time that we talked about this, I think it was maybe October.
I actually grew up in my district. We moved here my sophomore year in high school. My parents still live in the same house. And I just went through high school here and then have stayed in Lee Summit ever since. The neighborhood that my parents live in is Canterbury. My favorite thing, and I still do to this day, is I love to go running. They have the best sidewalks. I feel like you can go for days. So now I still get to do that since I live not too far from them. I get to use those same routes that I took during high school, and it's just fun. We're a big soccer family. I love sports, I love to watch sports, and it's even more fun to watch sports when my kids are in it. I coach my little daughter Josie's team, I have since kindergarten. We do the basketball, we do softball, we're going to do volleyball. It's just so much fun.
Hi, Faith Hodges. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear.
Something that I would like to accomplish while on city council is to get more family activities here. You know, I don't want to have to be driving my family to, say, the Kansas side or any other city but my own. And I want to be able to invest in our city and make family memories in our city.
Open the public hearing on the matter of K-1 speed, diventures.
Crack shack. Blue jeans golf.
That's Mayor Hodges.
I just want to say thank you for bringing us to Lee Summit. I grew up at this, my parents will take us there, so I'm excited to have to take my kids there.
Bill number 23, pre-construction services for the downtown Market Plaza project.
I am just as excited as everybody else about the downtown marketplace. I'm extremely excited about the community that it's going to bring, bringing more family, things to do to the city and right in the heart of it.
When you presented the numbers, the first time you came to us, it was 25.5% and then a lot of...
You know, people were like, oh, you know, being on council, it's not a lot of work, not a lot of... I think it was a bit of a surprise when there's so much info that you realize you just don't know. Even something as simple as sidewalks. It's like you don't realize how much goes into something like that. After a couple months, I'm like, okay, finally catching the groove of how things work, learning new things, but also feel like I've got some things under my belt as well. It's been a great experience so far.
...
Welcome, everyone. Would you please rise for the invocation and stay standing for the presentation of colors?
Heavenly Father, thank you for the blessings for this community that we call home. Guide us in our decisions and help us rise to the tasks ahead of us. As we focus on our duty to our community, maybe we share our commitment with our neighbors. Lord, please comfort the family of Fairway Police Officer Jonah Oswald as we offer our prayers and condolences. We will continue to pray for the well-being of our public safety officers. Amen.
Color guard, cut, hand, home. Present, home.
The United States of America, public for which it stands, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Color guard, port, home. Face, feet. At a half step, forward, push.
All right, well, thank you, everyone. That was the Lee Summit VFW Honor Guard. Gentlemen, thank you so much. I wish we could start every meeting like that. I got a little bit of goosebumps as it was going, as they were leaving. So thank you. We will get into the agenda. If I could get an approval of the agenda from a council member, please. I have a motion to adopt the agenda by Councilmember Shields, seconded by, I don't know where... Okay, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Oh, thank you, I skipped that. I haven't called the meeting to order yet either. The color guard just threw me off. So let's try this again. We did the pledge of allegiance, and we had the wonderful color guard. Now I need to call the meeting to order. I call the City of Lee Summit Regular Session, number 45, as amended to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hodges.
Here.
Councilmember Felker.
Here.
Councilmember DeMaro.
Here.
Councilmember Level. Councilmember Pryor.
Here.
Councilmember Edson.
Here.
Councilmember Shields.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Lopez.
Here.
Mayor Baird.
Here. All right, so now you know what my wife goes through if she changes routine in any way. I'm like the lost puppy in the house, going, what's going on, what's happening? So now may I get a motion to adopt. I have a motion to adopt the agenda by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. Passes 8-0, thank you. Next is the approval of the consent agenda. I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda by Councilmember DeMaro and a second by Mayor Pro Tem Lopez. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. Passes 8-0, thank you all. Next is the council roundtable, items of general interest, things going on in the community. Goodness, school's about to start. People's lives are about to change again. It's like this, August is just like all about preparation. All right, well then we'll go to proclamations. I have a proclamation. Is Mr. Gary Good here to meet me up front? Yeah, come on up front, sir. I'm going to read it with you up here, little face front. How are you? All right. Yeah, I know, I started slow, but I'm in a groove now. So whereas the Lee Summit Symphony Orchestra was founded by Russell Berlin and Phyllis Hamilton in 2003 as a way for talented teachers and local past students to perform symphonic music, and whereas the mission of the Lee Summit Symphony is to provide excellent musical experiences that enhance the quality of life for our community. And whereas comprising of over 100 volunteer musicians, the Lee Summit Symphony is the largest and oldest performing arts organization in Lee Summit. The symphony's roster includes 36 graduates of Lee Summit schools, 32 public school and university teachers, along with 21 musicians who have played with the symphony since its founding in 2003. Whereas the Lee Summit Symphony partners with other community organizations to provide reduced price and free tickets to youth and elementary school students to hear quality musical performances and offer students opportunities to participate in the orchestra for college credit. And whereas led by music director and conductor Kurt Mosher, a Lee Summit resident recognized throughout the world as a guest conductor, educator, and accomplished composer, the Lee Summit Symphony elevates the culture of our community for everyone to experience and enjoy their superior musical talents and exceptional performances. By virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Lee Summit, I do hereby proclaim August 13th, 2023 as Lee Summit Symphony Day. Can I get a round of applause, please? Very good. What would you like to say a few words for us?
Thank you, thank you. Well, thank you very much, Mayor. August 13th is this coming Sunday. The orchestra will kick off its 20th anniversary season officially with a concert at the Kaufman Center for the Performing Arts, which is very unusual for a community orchestra. The comments from the mayor outline many of the highlights of the orchestra's past 20 years. I would have to say that the last month has been an exceptionally rewarding month for us. We received our largest grant in history from the Missouri Arts Council, and also I think the largest grant that we've received from the Lee Summit Arts Council as well. So we thank you for that very much. In addition, Kurt Mosher, whom many of you know, he's a lifelong Lee Summit person, I understand. Kurt just returned from Sydney, Australia, two days ago, where he was conducting an international, excuse me, International Honors Youth Orchestra in the Sydney Opera House. So the word of Lee Summit is a great place to live and raise families and work is literally worldwide. We thank you very much for this. I know you're coming to the council on Sunday, and I invite the council and the audience to join us as well, 3 o'clock Sunday afternoon.
We're on that council roundtable thing, I didn't mention the state of the cities in a couple weeks. And then you go out here and you get in front of the Lee Summit Symphony and you remember that one of our strategic success factors is cultural and recreational amenities. So it's a big focus of ours as a city, and we love to support the symphony as well as others. But I'm looking forward to Sunday, so thank you. We have a presentation tonight. We have Mr. Jim Durham, our city lobbyist here. He's been a busy man this year. He's a busy man every year, but this year we had some, we had to lean on him a little more than we usually do. And I even had to go down to Jeff City a few times to testify. So Mr. Durham and Mr. Head, I see you're going to do an introduction for us.
Yes, Mayor, if I may, Brian Head, city attorney, just wanted to do a quick introduction, give a little preface. Mr. Durham has been our lobbyist, I know, for at least nine years. Because you've been the lobbyist since I've been here, but I don't know how the lobbyist since I've been here, but I don't know how far back that goes.
Think about sixteen.
About sixteen years. We do go to bid periodically. Mr. Durham, with his help, we were successful in getting a couple of pretty significant items through the legislature. Fortunately, the governor vetoed portions of those items that came through. So, while on the legislative side, we were successful, we did have some challenges with the governor's veto pin. Mr. Durham is with the Britton Group, and as he said, they've been our lobbying firm for a number of years. He kind of knows us backwards and forwards, and I know he assisted the mayor, and he's assisted others of us when we've gone down at various times to testify or to be in Jefferson City. So, with that, I'll let Mr. Durham give you his year-end report.
Please, no photographs with me, but...
I was getting ready to jump out there.
Well, it was an interesting session. Let's put it that way. And frankly, the big focus this year has been on social issues, not economic issues, not crime, not county or city government that much. And that probably will continue for another few years. However, the other thing that was happening this year that really affects the City of Lee Summit is the state has now found every way they can to cut state revenues, but they still want to reduce people's taxes. So, guess who's the next target? Now, they already passed this year a bill that would allow each county to freeze on the assessments of senior homes that were owned by and occupied by senior citizens, people over sixty-five. That, so far, as far as I've heard, Jackson County has not done that. But there is a procedure under that bill that would also allow, I believe it's five percent of the residents to petition for a vote of the people. And then, we're up to the fifty percent or fifty-one percent to pass. But that could hit you. But the other economic issue for the city has been, we were seeking an appropriation for the relocation of the Troop A headquarters. The city has already put up a lot of money or promised a lot of money. And the biggest problem at first that we ran into was, it was not part of the governor's recommended budget package. Now, we did get it added in the Senate with the help of Senator Seerpooy, and of course, with Lincoln Huff, who is the chairman of the Budget Committee. He put that, helped to put that in, too. And then Cody Smith, the chairman of the House Budget Committee, also agreed, put that in. And we got a commitment from the governor's office that, yes, I'm sorry, you know, I just, it slipped my mind. It just didn't get in. But, yeah, we want this. And at least through the end of session, hadn't heard any complaints about adding that money Well, the other thing that happened was there was money appropriated for I-70 improvements. But then, they turned around and made it basically an approval for a $2.8 billion redo of I-70. The governor didn't like that. Did sign it, though. Instead, what he did was there were all sorts of appropriations for local governments, lots and lots of little projects. He cut five hundred and fifty million from the budget by line iteming out almost all of those, including the appropriation for Troop A headquarters relocation. Now, he did authorize four million more, but we've still got that 2.7 million that we're not sure where that's gonna come from. The thing that kind of irritates me is, he, I think properly, pointed out, the original estimate from the Troop A people was that this was going to be about a $3 million project. They come back very, I mean, this year, and say, no, actually, it's going to be an $8 million project, 8.7 million. It's almost triple what they'd originally estimated. Governor was a little bit upset about that. But then, his other rationale was, more of this should come from other sources, including maybe local sources. We've tried to get to him and point out that the city is putting up a great amount of money, and we would like to see kind of a breakdown of, as I understand it, it's about eight million or a little over eight million the city's gonna be putting in for the relocation. But if the city can get to me some of the kind of basis where that's actually going, what things are being paid for with that, it would help. But I have a feeling we're back the next year. We have not gotten much cooperation. I should say, we have heard a whole lot from the budget chairs, both Senate and House. Neither of them, in private, is making any commitment to even bring up any of these for an override. They've got the votes easily, I mean, or the Republicans have the votes easily to do it. But I don't think they're going to, when it's an election year next year, when the governor is in his final term, and, so, it really comes down to, if we're gonna get any more money, we need to try and get it next year, not at veto session. The other big issue for the city, of course, was the Senate Bill 590, House Bill 909, I think it was, that would expand the area outside of a city from one-half mile to one mile, where they could object to and basically veto any solid waste disposal site. That had tremendous support from Jackson County, from counties, Cass County, the Cass County Senator was the sponsor in the Senate, lots of support. Kansas City was sort of, well, you know, let's see. It's our city that it's gonna be in. That, they at least stayed quiet. Our biggest problem was coming from some of these senators in the St. Louis area, managed to keep talking and keep talking and keep talking until finally, after about eight hours, sat down and worked out a deal to appropriate a hundred thousand to DNR for a study of solid waste disposal facilities, specifically, really, the Jackson County one. Kansas City also agreed to take up a bill or at least a resolution, wait a year to do anything about approving or going forward with it. I don't know, I've been looking at the papers and cannot find anything where they have actually adopted that, but I rather assume they have. However, the governor, again, vetoed that hundred thousand, again citing, you know, this is really a local expenditure, there's no need for. Biggest thing with that bill, the current law with the half mile only applies to Jackson So, we had some senators who basically got up and said, this is a totally local issue. It's up to those senators in Jackson County and representing that area to really make that decision. And if they're gonna offer this bill, I'm going to support it. But we had a couple of them say that. Unfortunately, we didn't hear it from the east side of the state. So, that extension to one mile, which would only apply to Jackson County and specifically to Kansas City, didn't make it. And neither did the hundred thousand. Now, again, we're not seeing any movement, and frankly, I'm seeing some lobbyists for this AC recycling and garbage or whatever it's called quitting or being fired, maybe. But in any event, I don't know that we're gonna have the same opposition next year, but that's gonna be basically your last chance to get that thing passed if, still need, if you still need to pursue it. And as far as I know, Senator Bratton is definitely gonna offer it again. And, now, I can't even remember the rep, but, oh, Representative Hafner is, I feel certain, going to offer it. But we do have a chance again next year. And other than that, I guess, watch your budget, because they're gonna be after it. And they're gonna be after especially property taxes, which they feel are too high. They've often had the, go after the sales taxes, try to cap those at a certain amount. Now, a lot of these are the very same people that keep pushing the fair tax, which is, we do away with the income tax, and we just raise the sales tax. So, they want to maybe raise the sales tax for the state, but not let you all raise yours, or even worse, they may try to take some away. And I'll try to answer any questions, or I'll hide behind the lectern here.
Real quick, before I start going to council members, the governor slashed five hundred and fifty million, but are they, I've heard that the state's still sitting on about two billion, two billion dollars with a B. So, when do those monies have to be allocated by? No?
None of the two billion has to be appropriated for anything at this point. They've appropriated everything that had to do with some of the COVID-type bills and stuff. They haven't necessarily spent it, but as long as it's appropriated, it's committed. But the two billion is pretty much sitting there. One of the other, I mean, one of the problems is because of how they handled income taxes and corporate taxes and things like that, their revenues are down considerably. Now, by that, I mean by seven, eight percent. They're looking at bringing in maybe a billion less than before. And frankly, where they're gonna get it from is hoping that the feds will send them money, while at the same time, of course, complaining about how much taxes are at the federal level. But they can't do anything about that.
And then Senator Seerpooy says he's going to sponsor that bill coming forward for the landfill. But he also qualifies it by saying he's making no promises. I mean, he doesn't know if he can get it through. What's the key to getting past the few people on the east side of the state that...
Term limits? Well, with a couple of them, they're gonna be running for, well, presumably, one of them is running for governor. Others are looking at other statewide offices. And so, they're gonna be a little more reluctant about, pardon the expression, pissing off a million Missourians.
Yeah.
So, that may help. They may decide to just sit and be silent. And frankly, I mean, those are the ones who are our biggest problems.
Okay. All right. I'm gonna go around the council and get ready for some rapid fire here. Councilmember Edson?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Durham, for making the trip. I always appreciate you coming up. Yeah, going back to the question about the five hundred and fifty million, the governor slashed.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Why? I mean, you said he was mad about the I-70, how much they were spending on I-70, so he just decided to go after the local governments and slash money from theirs?
Pretty much. And I will say, this year, you know, we keep talking about pork barrel politics in DC. This year, there were a lot of local things. And part of that was because we had this big nest egg, so it's, why not? But I will say, I mean, I looked at what some of these projects were, and it was things that really didn't benefit the state even at all. Troop A relocation at least benefits the state by giving them new headquarters, more equipment and things. But basically, it was just because revenues looked like they were going down, and he did specifically mention that because of the tax cuts the year prior, revenues would be down. But again, I mean, there's federal money coming in that's more than half of the state budget. So...
Well, and I remember the article that came out when he slashed the Highway Patrol, and there was a comment, and he said, it's not the state's responsibility to make up for this difference. And it's like, it's your building and your staff, you know?
Well, and it totally ignored the fact that the city is putting up a great deal of money, and then has more money to put into the project to relocate or widen everything.
Well, I appreciate your response. Could you remind me who the budget chairs are for the Senate and the House?
Senate is Lincoln Huff from the Springfield area. And I really like Lincoln because he'll listen, and he doesn't, pretty much of a moderate. And then Cody Smith is chairman in the House, and this will be his last, I mean, this next year will be his last as chairman and in the legislature.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And I should note, not only did say Lee Summit should come up with, or, you know, there should be other sources for this, that was the same exact sentence he used on every other one of these individual city projects and stuff. So, he wasn't just picking on us.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember DeMaro?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Durham, thank you again for coming up and your presentation. And it does, it does bring me pause when the governor says, or is not aware of the, what the City of Lee Summit is putting into this project, as well as the other community partners. I mean, we're far enough down the road in this project that he should be fully aware... I mean, we're far enough down the road in this project that he should be fully aware. But anyway, that's, that's commentary. Do have a couple of questions. The freezing the property taxes for social security recipients, 65-year-olds. I realize that language is not, is not ironclad. Is there, is there plans for the legislature to go back and kind of clean up that language? Because I understand that it specifically is social security recipients at 65 and there will be some at 62. There's others that have retired that are not on social security that are 65 and older. And, and how are they going to be, you know, taken care of? Is, is there plans to clean that language up?
Not that I'm aware of, but you are referring to the income tax, eliminating the income tax.
Well, the first property tax freeze.
Oh, that, what passed on that wasn't limited to people on social security. Anybody 65 and older resides in the residence.
Okay.
Is entitled to that freeze. And what it basically does is says, you know, what you're paying now, you have to continue paying, but it won't go up.
Okay. I misunderstood that. I thought you, that social security was one of the predicates for that.
No, but there is, they did for social security and pension benefits. Eliminate the state income tax on that, which is another thing that's gonna hurt revenues.
And then my second question is, do we have any confidence at all that the, to bring up the, the landfill situation will be early in the session, if not a prefiled bill?
I would, I would hope it got prefiled in December. You can't really control that, but I think both Bratton, Hafner, Senator Sirpoy is going to do it too. Both should all be introduced hopefully during prefiling. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean it's first down the line. Because I've seen where they'll assign bills, you know, Bill 1, Bill 2, Bill 3, we'll put those in committees. Bill 4, skip 5 and 6, Bill 7, Bill 8. And those will get assigned to committees. But in this case, I think both houses, both chambers are going to try and move that as quickly as possible.
Well, hopefully, I mean, we, our District 30 representative is, has a hand in that. And he resides in Lee Summit, so I'm sure he will be favorable. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Well, it wasn't overly helpful this year, but there's not, I will say, especially for his first year as floor leader, he's got a lot of people coming around saying, oh, you need to move this, you need to do this, you need to do that. And he did give it a chance and, I mean, it got through the House. It's when it got to the Senate that.
Log down. Yeah. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Councilmember Felker.
Thank you, Mayor. And I had a couple of questions. And actually, just going back to, Councilmember Demoral asked about the social security, being eligible for social security, being a qualifying, a way of defining eligible taxpayer for that. I think we, I think you're right. At least I'm looking at Senate Bill 90, 190. Seems like it mentions the eligible taxpayer is one who eligible for social security retirement benefits. And so I think the concern is school employees, former teachers who may not fit.
They are, they are still eligible. They just don't get any. It, it's basically tied to 65 years of age. Or, I should say, or 66.
Okay. Well, I would love some clarity on that because it seems, and again, I know we're talking about a state law and we're not really in charge of it, but we do have lots of people who talk to us about stuff that happens in Jackson County right now with property tax. And so our ability to be knowledgeable on that, I think, would be helpful. But it, I certainly know in my other professional life, when I represent clients doing estate planning, we're talking about they are not eligible for social security retirement benefits because of their, because they qualify for the pension that the schools uniquely provide. So I'm not here to argue about it, but maybe some clarity.
Maybe we do need to take another look at it. But I mean, the way I would interpret it, at least the way I think all the legislators interpret it is, it's when you would be eligible. And since that changes, like I think now they're getting into the 67 and.
Sure. Okay. Okay. A couple of other questions.
I just ran out of answers.
There we go. So I just wanted, I think I didn't hear something completely. You were, you were talking about the lobbyists who represent KC or Recycle, I think is what they're calling themselves. Did you say that you thought that their lobbyists were quitting or being fired? I just wanted to make sure what I heard was accurate.
Well, let's start with the fact that they had 17 lobbyists. I don't know whether they're the ones cutting back or whether the lobbyists are saying, don't want to mess with this anymore, too much work. But they have had a number of them who have withdrawn as their lobbyist. Now, there's still plenty left.
And I looked at the list that was provided in your May email and those, there's, I mean, a lot of names of long, long people who've been doing, who've been in your business for a long time. So.
Yes.
Okay. And I think, and this is more of a comment, not necessarily to you, but maybe whether to you or to our staff here, it would be nice to know if Kansas City has adopted that resolution. I don't know if we could find out if they actually did adopt the resolution where they put a moratorium on the.
They, they had at least brought it up for a, or they were scheduling it for a vote. This was back, I think, before June even. And I never could find any article and actually, I haven't heard back from the two council members that I'm acquainted with, but.
Mr. Dunn, do you have?
Yeah, I do believe that did pass. And if memory serves me, rewrite that. I'll, I'll call it a moratorium, runs through June of '24.
All right.
And
Thank you.
At the beginning, Mr. Head said, made a comment that there were several things passed on behalf of the city, but being subject to veto. So we've talked about the two of them today, the Trope allocation and then the landfill. Were there any others that were unique to the city of Lee Summit?
No.
That we would need to, okay. And then one more question, I guess, regards to, well, it's kind of two, I'm gonna ask two questions and I'm not sure who wants to answer first. So Mr. Dunning.
Pass.
You don't want to stand in his place. You did send an email to us as counsel after the line item came through, indicating that, and I was just kind of looking back at it, back in July. I'm not gonna have you recite numbers or anything, but you talked about the receipt of, knowing about the veto. You sent us this on July 7th, saying that, you know, we're still moving forward. There's, you know, obviously some adjustments that might have to be made. And the highway patrol is having to cut the firing range in order to account for the fact that the, this veto happened. And you, the way we hear it from you is, you know, okay, this amount that the state was gonna allocate, you know, we want to come back and ask for it again. But then, Mr. Dunning also hearing from you that, okay, we're, yes, this has happened, but there's gonna try to be some adjustments to help us try to move forward. Can you just help me understand a little better what the trajectory is at this point?
Yep, sure can. So that, that gap, Mr. Durham's right, is 2.7 million. And we were trying to solve for the 6.7 million. And that was recommended as Mr. Durham expressed, but then that 2 million got cut by the line item veto. So in working with our partners at the state, we are pursuing an approach where highway patrol headquarters can still be relocated, but scope back a portion of that sense of a firing range and some other types of facility needs that they may have in order to get Trope relocated to allow the interchange improvements to move through. So it's, it's more in scoping, given the resources that we have compiled between the numerous partners in this, to still make this work. So perhaps the thought is, you know, we still need to put efforts towards really solving for the, the entire relocation of Trope, if they have to pull scope back and hopefully get there.
So, so what I'm hearing is they may have to pare down their plans in terms of location, what they can do with it, maybe hold off on certain things if they'd like to add perhaps at a later date. Unless in the process of doing this, we identify the approximately 2.7 million. But there's a large, the other, the, is there a larger gap than that that remains?
That's 2.7.
That's the, that's the remaining gap. Okay.
And I should note, that's, the 4 million is on top of the 3.1, 3.2 million that was appropriated in 2022 for the Trope relocation. So they've got over 7 million. It's just their costs had apparently gone up.
Just like we've experienced with our, with our projects.
So it may, and my other question is, it seems like if the governor was using some cut and paste, that's what we, we've just discussed on the vetoes. And I have no idea how many staff members he has looking at those things and reviewing. I mean, the reality is that the, the volume of things that he deals with is more than I'm sure any human mind could, could accommodate. So that's why you hire people to help. But I just wonder if, if our efforts perhaps in advocacy could be, if, if in fact we make another push for this, if we can take some cues or interact together to say, let's do our part as a council, you know, obviously via perhaps the mayor, but, and then just however else we can reinforce the message so that it's not lost in the shuffle. Because the squeaky wheel gets the grease, or however that phrase works.
Oh, and I should give you a little extra background. Of course, this has to be first requested by Public Safety. And there are lobbyists of, oh, I think five, six years has just put out a shingle himself as a private lobbyist. So we don't know yet who the new lobbyist is going to be for the department.
Anyway, maybe that's more of a comment and also a request in your role to draw us in perhaps when that time comes, whether that's before session with a legislator, the budget chairs or, and/or along the way.
Right now, the person you could reach out to is the governor. He'll be around to veto it next year.
Is there another question, totally unrelated? Is there any discussion for, there's not a veto session that I've heard discussed.
Oh, yeah. September 13th. It's constitutional, but.
Right. Is it, but has there been one called is the question? He hasn't called a veto session.
A special session?
Yeah. Sorry, I'm getting the terms confused. He hasn't called a special session.
No.
Okay.
And if he does, it's not gonna be for appropriations. But one of the problems we ran into, of course, this year is not being part of his recommendation. But we are trying to talk to him about that particularly. And as I said, I really need kind of a breakdown of what the city is going to be spending money on. It has, other than the actual widening of the intersection and the, or the interchange, an improvement of that, but what money, what's the, and you all have a lot of money tied up in this. So it would help to have an idea of where that money is going or for what purposes.
Thank you again for speaking with us today. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay. I just have a couple more questions. First, do you think Jackson County could actually track if somebody was 65 years or older and?
Yes, but.
Do you know what we're going through right now? They can't, they can't track a building right now that's being, that's built. So I, I'm not even sure what to think about all that.
I'm certain it would require a person to actually apply for.
We got 41,000 appeals they're dealing with right now, so I don't know that they have time to take care of that. But it's, it's a little bit of a mess right now. Just philosophically speaking, we go down every year and we make asks of our representatives and senators. We did get 10 and a half million, I think, two years ago, not this year, but the year before for infrastructure. We went down and had multiple, we had three asks this last year that we focused on. Of course, we wanted support for the landfill to, to get that one mile. And the highway patrol, we wanted that done. And then we chose, you know, we tried to look at our, our infrastructure, since that's what these funds are supposed to be used for. And we made a pitch on 470 being expanded from View High all the way to 40 Highway. Because that would go right, that's a good fit with 70 Highway. And, but our, nobody, I don't think anybody, the, I think it was just too big of an ask. Because we didn't get, we got excitement from our representative senators, but they didn't, they didn't want to go champion that.
Is that, that from the stimulus money?
That, that was this last year. We knew that the governor was sitting on that, what, $6 billion? I don't know however much it was. And we were like, okay, we need to go, everybody's making their ass. Like you said, there were a lot of local stuff, money going different ways. And we thought we better, we better make an ask. And so I, I guess philosophically, I'm just wondering, what's the sweet spot? I mean, is there, we got 10 million and we were very thankful for that. That was for sewers and such on the northeast side of our community. Is there a sweet spot when you're going in there to ask, make our asks of our senators and such, dollar-wise amount?
In this case, the state was only distributing money to communities under 50,000. You all should have been, should have received money directly from the government, from the feds.
We did. We did receive monies.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, two batches?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
All right.
Well, listen, just like Councilmember Felker said, the squeaky wheel.
Right.
Right. So we're, we gotta do our part. That's the one thing I've learned in this seat. It's my least favorite part.
I'm not entirely sure that the state could actually appropriate that stimulus money at least for you all because of your size. But they're distributing it to these other cities. That means there's money in general revenue that should be available.
Okay. Well, that's, that's, that's the kind of help we need help with is when we're going down there, you know, I'll talk to council like I did last year. We'll, we'll go again. And we'll, we'll have an ask and I wanna, I wanna make sure it's, you know, I don't want to waste my, waste my time or theirs or council's time. Because I ask them to go with me most of the time. There's strength in numbers. So.
Or intimidation, one of the.
Well, we don't have 17 lobbyists, but we're, we're pretty, I got a couple of, I got an attorney up here, a couple of legal-minded people up here that can help. So we just wanna, we just wanna be able to go up there. We go make friends first. That's what we're trying to do. But then we like to have an ask that would benefit the, the state. And the, and the reason, the way, the approach we take is what better place is there to invest in Lee Summit? We're the one place where for sure in, in the metro here on the Missouri side that is bringing in new construction dollars to this, to this state. We are an economic hub and a lot of, and creating a lot of additional dollars to go to Jeff City. And so we're, we think we're a good place to invest in. And our senators and representatives feel that way too. But we just want to be able to hand them some, a nice little, neat little package that they can get back to us. I don't wanna, I don't, I don't want to get no's. I want to get yeses from them. So we'll probably be in touch before we make any more asks and such, so.
Yeah, it'd be nice if we could kind of coordinate with you because our difficulty is gonna lie, of course. going to lie, of course, is, well, particularly the east side of the state. I mean, you all think you have problems with Kansas. I think Lewis is just as bad.
Yep.
You know, they're the ones who kind of stole the gateway city, and now you've become the city of fountains, so.
Well, we're the city of the coolest downtown. Well, you've been great. Thank you, sir.
All right.
And be careful on your way back.
I'm getting used to the drive now.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Good conversation, everyone. We're going to go to some business here. We've got a public hearing, so I'm going to close the regular session and open the public hearing in the matter of preliminary development plan, Douglas Corner Retail Building, 150 Northeast Tudor Road, Capital Builders LLC is the applicant. Would all those wishing to speak to this matter please rise and be sworn in by the city clerk? Does the applicant have a presentation? Excellent.
Well, appreciate the consideration. I'll be brief, I know staff will follow my comments, and so I'll try and highlight aspects of the project that they might not highlight.
Are you Matt?
I am Matt, I'm sorry.
Matt Hendrickson?
Yep.
Okay.
1507 Northeast Wall Street. Not sure if you need that.
What's your company?
Capital Builders.
Capital, okay. Thank you.
This is an 8,000 square foot, single story retail building located to kind of orient you across the street from Lee Summit North behind Schlotzki's, a parcel that sat vacant for many years. We are building this speculatively, don't have any tenants currently under lease for this project. And the site itself is quite large with the majority of it handling the regional attention in the area, so hope to be in soon and I'll defer to staff for any further clarification.
How big, how big are the units going to be?
They're demised in a variety of ways, and so you'll see on a front elevation here, we have several entry points. Ideally, I think we'll be in the three to four, two to four tenant range. I think they could range from as small as around 1,000 square feet up to 500 feet.
Okay. All right. We'll probably have some questions for you in a minute. We'll, we'll let Mr. McGuire do his thing.
Shannon McGuire, senior planner. Please enter the record, exhibit A, list of exhibits one through 18.
Okay, enter into the record, exhibit A, one through 18. Thank you.
Right, as the applicant stated, the project is here at the intersection of Northeast Tudor and Northeast Douglas. There's not a lot of new information since the planning commission, so I'll kind of keep this brief and can answer any questions you may have. It is a commercial, there are commercial uses to the north, west, and south. There's about 180 square feet of residential portion that borders on the north end as well, with the east side being bordered by the ethnically zoned church property there. The portion where it abuts to the residential does have a six foot wooden fence currently existing there. Again, it's about an 8,000 square foot property. They are planning to reuse the existing parking lot that's already out there. They are asking for two modifications. Those modifications had to do with the landscape buffer and materials they are proposing for the trash enclosure. The architecture on the proposed elevation is contemporary aesthetic. It does kind of mix well with some of the more modern buildings or some more recently constructed buildings in the area. They are proposing to use architectural metal panels, stucco, composite wood panels, as well as some glass on the storefronts there. Get into the modifications, as you can see from this slide here, there's a lot going on with regards to utilities, overhead and both buried. Current UDO requirements would be a high impact buffer along that north property line and a medium impact buffer along the western property line. The north property line high impact buffer would require 20 feet of vegetation with a fence located in the center of that 20 feet, so 10 feet of vegetation on each. As you can see here, there's, like I said, we've got quite a bit going on in that 20 foot buffer area. We got the red lines that represent the overhead lines. The green line is going to be the sanitary sewer. The darker green is another. The pink color line is a fiber optic line, and then orange hashed area does represent the 100 foot overhead lines carry with it. So quite a bit going on in there, really no real ability to follow the UDO with that buffer, because there's just too many buildings, both overhead and buried. So there's pretty good conflict there. In compensate for that, the applicant has, is planning some vegetation around the building to help give a softer look on the backside there. This is the same modification that was granted in October 2018 for a previously approved PDP on this site that was just never built. Second modification is going to be to the proposed material used for the trash enclosure. Trash enclosure typically would be required to be built out of stone or masonry. The applicant is proposing to use a composite wood material that is also being, proposed to use as a building material on the principal structure, so it'll have a nice tie between the two and kind of blend the materials for the both. This picture here is an example of a wood composite material, trash enclosure that was approved by council just here by the dance studio at 216 Southeast Douglas here in downtown. It's, it's worked out pretty well, so staff is, is supportive of both the modifications. They are seeking approval of a conditional material. Again, they are proposing to use architectural metal panels. Typically, the UDO would require a masonry, concrete, stucco, or stone, or glass on the front. Metal is limited to incidental roll or as approved by the council. The material is consistent with other recently approved buildings throughout the community as well, or such as the churches, libraries, and are recently approved fire stations. Again, staff is supportive of the comprehensive land, comprehensive plan, land use map does identify the area as commercial in use, and the proposed retail or residential or retail office is consistent with that land use map and is a use permitted by the existing zoning. There was one comment brought up by the planning commission during public hearing, and it had to do with the landscaping. As you can see here, they are proposing quite a few bushes along the landscape or the private street and parking lot here. The planning commission thought it'd be, provide much more, a better aesthetic if there was a, a tree in these landscape or the island canoes here. The reason that they're currently not have trees is because they're a little too narrow. The UDO does require a 10 foot planning area for any trees. Staff has worked with the applicant. They have agreed to, at the FDP level, widen these so we can accommodate some trees in there. So we have added a condition of approval requiring that at the FDP. So with that, staff does have the six conditions of approval, as you see here. The first three had to do with those modifications that we spoke about. Number four is for the tree on the landscape islands, and then the five and six are the standard, or five is the standard addition to, to approve or that the project will be developed within accordance to the plans that they have submitted. And number six has to do with approval of the conditional material for the architectural metals. With that, that concludes staff's presentation. I can answer any questions you may have.
All right. Screen logged out. Councilmember, yes, Councilmember Demora has a question.
Thank you, Mayor. Shannon, the, the six foot fence that is currently right there, who maintains that six foot fence?
The property owner, the residential property owner owns that fence and maintains it.
Each property owner maintains their, their own section?
Just one property owner.
Oh, just one property, so that's the only six foot fence right there?
Yep.
What, what's the, like 201 Dream Weaver? What do they have? Do they have anything?
There is a wood, wood fence out there, but that it would be.
Four foot? Probably a four foot then?
I'm not sure, given that it's off site.
And I completely understand the, the modification for the high impact buffer with the utilities, you know, in, in conflict there. But what my concern is, the, the retention ponds, is there any way we could buffer those? Or is there absolutely too many utilities there to buffer? Because the, the one house on Dream Weaver right there, I mean, even though it's a six foot fence, they're going to be looking at that detention pond.
So it is a detention pond, it doesn't hold water, so it'll be mostly just a green open space at times when it's not raining, when it is raining, it will fill up a little bit. Are you asking if we could put fencing or vegetation?
Vegetation, yeah, since the fence, fence won't work, fence would be too deep.
The problem with installing vegetation along that area is we do have those overhead lines, and the power company is pretty protective of that.
Okay.
So I don't know that they would really want anything in there.
So those would be right under it, right? And then the, the, the trees and shrubs, or the shrubs and the added trees, what are we looking at there? I mean, what diameter? Are they going to be small and then grow into maturity or?
They would, you know, definitely be smaller, probably more of an ornamental size. We're not probably going to put a big oak shade tree out there.
Which brings me to my last question, that is, I don't know if the applicant wants to answer this, or maybe you can. I didn't see any, any discussion of a neighborhood meeting. Was there a neighborhood meeting?
There was.
Okay, I didn't see anything, there was, I don't think there was anything in our packet, I kind of went through it, and I was looking for that information of how many people attended, any comments?
It was held on June 12th, and I can defer to the applicant for any comments on, on that.
All righty.
Yeah, so we held a neighborhood meeting. There were three individuals that showed, one or two are the existing owners from whom are buying the parcel. The third was the neighboring residential homeowner whose principal comment, she was excited and energized by the project, but was frustrated with the lack of care for some of the overgrowth that had occurred around her fence, and was just wanting to make sure that that would be taken care of in perpetuity. And so that was her complaint. Preparation for us as part of that neighborhood meeting.
And so there was an agreement between you folks and her to, for you guys to take care of that overgrowth?
Yeah.
As it occurs?
Correct, yeah, as far as within the bounds of our, our property lines, obviously. I, I think there was, she may not, I think there's some confusion as to what's her prop, what was her property versus ours, but yeah, we're committed to being a good neighbor there.
Okay, well, thank you, sir.
Yep.
Thank you, Mayor, I think that.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Felker.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. McGuire, just a few questions. I appreciate when you mentioned the metal panels and that, I appreciate you giving us the reference points, libraries, I think you said some churches that have used, kind of employed a similar look. So I guess I'm just saying thanks for, I was kind of curious as to how often we've done that, so you answered that question. And with the idea of putting, again, a buffer on the north, and I think the east side were the two areas where we're looking for modifications from the, and you mentioned the, the power lines above, I mean, I, my backyard has power lines running through it, so I've had a tree cut down, or at least they come and say, what, what do you want to do? And they're more or less, we're going to cut that down, and I didn't really have any options. At least I didn't fight it, and this has been several years ago. But is it also true, there's also the underground too? Is that actually present more of the problem that, are you messing with? I saw like fiber optic line and some other anitaries, yep, there we go. Does that, is that actually more of the problem because what you got to go down into?
That would be an issue as well, yes. Also, kind of on the eastern side is the slope of the detention pond raises somewhat of a concern as well, because you don't want to plant trees into that detention pond, so it really would push that, that buffer to the, to the edge as well. So just a lot going along, a lot going on on those two property lines that really conflict.
And the way this is laid out is the trees that are more right, if you will, right next to the building, that's, that's the kind of buffer that we're looking for, trying to have some visual other than just straight on to the building.
Correct.
So then I have a different question that's kind, actually it's related, and I guess I've thought about this. When these plans are approved and then they go forward and everything's built and the trees are put in, the bushes are put in, and let's say some number of years later, and I'm not focusing on this property owner necessarily, but let's say the owner of a property later just pulls them all out. What, what's our, as a city, do we have a remedy? Is there, is there a remedy for that? Do we have the ability to go back to the, now maybe even not the same owner and say, hey, you know, this was approved with those bushes being there, or these trees being there, and now they're gone? Or they've been left and they've died? Like, that's the things I'm thinking.
So yeah, so that would become a neighborhood services case where we can go out there and to the current owner, whether it be the owner who had got the initial approval or subsequent owners, and say, look, this is the approved landscape plan, this is what you're required to have in here, and we can enforce on that approved plan. So if they are to remove them, they are to replace them, if they just die or become sick or diseased, we can address that.
That's good to know. And then on the trash enclosures, I recall when we did that downtown, are we, is that, have we used this, you know, the, the masonry walls are still, okay, I know there's, there's a requirement, but we're using the wood panel system for these, and it's what's being requested here. Have we done that anywhere else, or is this really just the second time?
Will be number two.
Okay. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Pryor.
I forgot that I had a question, but I mean, I remember my question, so thanks. Um, okay, so I like the modern look. I do worry what the modern look is going to look like in five or 10 years, 15 years down the road. Are you using, I don't know all the terminology, but are you using good materials on this that are going to hold up?
Good question. So stucco as a material in and of itself, if not done right, from a construction science standpoint, can cause problems. It is somewhat forgiving in that it can be pared and painted and made to look good. The metal panel and the wood look composite material, I think there's like a 50 year life on the wood look composite. The metal panel, I'm not sure exactly what its life is, but a pretty, pretty durable material as well. So, and then the storefront. pretty durable material as well. So um, and then the storefront. That often. So anyways, to answer your question, I think that the the materials that are being used predominantly are long-lasting and.
Okay, good to know. Thanks. And then um, I watched Planning Commission and I don't, oh, I do like the addition of trees too. But I watched Planning Commission and I don't think you said that you have like specific tenants yet, but have you had interest from any tenants so far?
Yeah, so we've had um some interest, uh, nothing that I could really materially speak of at this point. Um, uh, you know, I think we feel confident in in that area and um, there's already a large health and wellness presence, medical presence. Um, it is a second-tier property which um off of some major tra- uh, traffic ways. Um, but to answer your question, yes, but nothing significant at this point. Nor has our marketing efforts really matched the where where we will once once we begin construction and whatnot, so.
What's your ideal medical offices kind of or?
Yeah, that's what we have in mind. We've, we have talked with a chiropractic firm and um, a small medical, I think would fit nicely in that area, but would be, we've done a few of these where we have, you know, boutique workout, um, assable um type.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Alright. Okay, um, I've just got a couple of questions. Um, the parcel viewer on Jackson County is showing that you don't have the parking lot, but I'm guessing that you do have the parking lot with this.
Yeah, there's a minor plot that's occurred or or will occur to encompass.
Oh, okay, so you're, you are getting that uh from the property across the street then?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, and then when, uh, how much of the, I, you can't tell by these parcel viewers. It looks like you would go, your property would go to halfway down the middle of the of the road.
I think that's accurate. I could defer to the civil engineer who's here, but yes, um, and there is some shared maintenance costs of that.
Are you, are you worried about that at all just because that road's a little bit rough right there?
Yeah, um, I've talked through it a little bit with the existing owner who owns the building to the west there, who we're buying it from.
Yeah.
Sounds like there were recent improvements made. The asphalt of that main drive alley isn't in terrible condition at the current current point due to some recent improvements.
I was just looking on Google Maps when I said that it was, because I've been on that road before, but not, I haven't been on it recently.
I think a year or two, there's improvements made.
Oh, okay, good. And then um, you'll, you're gonna use the parking lot, obviously you're you're buying it, but then you're gonna um, are you gonna do an overlay on that or anything like that to go to match up with the new parts of that parking lot you're gonna put in?
Yeah, so there's a portion of that that will be entirely new and then some that will be some patch or overlay that will have to occur, yeah. There's portions of that existing lot that aren't serviceable.
Yep. Very good. All right, that's my, that's my questions. Appreciate it. Uh, is there anyone that uh would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this application? Please come forward. Any additional questions from council? Does the applicant care to make further comment? All right, thank you. Hearing no further testimony, I'm closing the public hearing and reopening the regular session. Is there any council discussion on this application? Councilmember Edson.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say this, I like the project. I'm so happy you're putting something on that vacant lot. So I wish you all the best. I think this is gonna be a great addition to that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, what's the, uh, what was on this, Mr. Dunning? What was, what was here before? That, why is there a parking lot there?
If memory serves me right, I think Missouri Gas Energy had that whole area at one point in time and then just incrementally as they relocated, just tenants became in and that multi-tenant space, that's where MGE was, and I think this was part of their, I'll call it their yard area.
Oh, okay, so they, they did have that, they did build that for across the street just for more parking?
Yeah, it, it, maybe they had some coverage structures there for utility trucks and other other supplies and things.
You, did you uh allow that gravel area on the north side? Did you let that go through?
I, I was there before I came to the city, I believe.
Oh, it was?
Yes.
Before you, well, that's a long time ago.
Well, before I started working for the city.
Oh, goodness. Well, I'm, I'm glad you're gonna fix that parking lot too. It's gonna be nice. And I'm glad there's been improvements on that road. Because I know people are gonna speed in front of your place to go to that gas station. And we don't need any potholes to slow them down. Maybe a speed bump. Yeah. Okay, um, I'm not seeing any further questions or comments, so I will go to Councilmember Demora. Would you please read Bill number 23 dash 150?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. I move uh to advance to second reading and ordinance, uh, Bill number 23 150 and ordinance approving a preliminary development plan for Douglas Corner Retail Building on land located at 150 Northeast Tudor Road, all in accordance with provisions of Chapter 33, Unified Development Ordinance of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Lee Summit, Missouri.
We have a motion to move to second reading, Bill number 23 dash 150 by Councilmember Demora and seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? I noticed that photo went down, the the image went down and I am, I'm pretty sure those colors, those contemporary colors. I'm pretty sure that's what my wife just redesigned our house, those colors, so I sure hope it doesn't go out in five years. So I mean, that that would be bad. Of course, my wife would probably be okay with it. Yeah, she would just redesign. You can paint stucco, right? Yeah, okay. I'm not seeing any further comments other than my silliness, so uh please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. And it passes eight zero. Thanks for investing in Lee Summit. All right, we're at the public comments portion of the meeting.
Mayor, I've not received any public comments or requests.
Thank you. And that will take us to proposed ordinances forwarded from committee. Uh, Councilmember Edson, would you please read Bill number 23 dash 151?
Thank you, Mayor. I move for second reading of Bill number 23 dash 151 and ordinance amending the economic development incentive policy for the City of Lee Summit, Missouri.
All right, thank you. We have a motion to adopt Bill number 23 dash 151 by Councilmember Edson, seconded by Councilmember Felker. Discussion? Yes, Councilmember Felker.
Mayor, I know this has been discussed at length in committee, but I've I I wouldn't mind if Mr. Eelm, I I, I mean, this is such a consequential document and it influences, it's really the word that came to my mind is this art, it's the playbook, if you will, for someone who wants to look at the city and do business with us. Uh, and how are you gonna, how are they gonna come in? So I feel like it's important that we have a, maybe a brief conversation about it. Would you, if you wouldn't mind uh kind of sharing some of your thoughts on the revisions?
Yeah, absolutely. Ryan Eelm, Assistant City Manager, uh, thank you for the opportunity. Um, so uh, there were uh a minimum of three conversations with the CDC uh over these these proposed changes. Um, the, uh, a lot of the discussion was was really kind of over um the format of the policy, if you will, a little bit. Was kind of where we ended up a eventually with the the conversations. We had um a very, I'll say, we had a few uh policy-specific items uh that, once we went through a lot of the conversation, we were able to kind of really distill down uh into some generalized policy statements. Um, so just uh overall, um, we really discussed the vision, uh, the economic development vision that's in the policy. Uh, that statement didn't really change uh in any particular way. Uh, we added uh specific references to the strategic plan and the comprehensive plan. Uh, ensure and ensured there was a little bit more alignment between those updated documents and and this document. The targeted businesses uh now reference the comprehensive plan. Um, there's a section on positive community image, uh, and that section talks about um expectations that incentivize projects exceed UDO standards. Uh, that that was kind of a, a bit of a discussion point, particularly related to blighted CIDs uh of shopping centers. Um, there was a lot of discussion about how do we ensure that a blighted CID request isn't just the result of a poor business decision. Uh, and and through a lot of that conversation, it was really determined that those are gonna be best uh as um, a case-by-case scenario because each of those projects' economics are a little bit different. But it was really important to the committee that uh if the city is going to be participating, um, and city being the taxpayers, that there be something additional, that there be a positive community image, a positive community benefit as a result of those uh of that participation. We broke out uh again on the formatting a little bit. Um, the the document was a great document. It's been a great living document and that's uh evident by the amount of times it's kind of been amended to and added to over the years. Uh, but what that kind of has resulted in was policy statements being uh in several different locations throughout the, throughout the um document. So there would be a section that would say, you know, targeted areas and it would have specific uh, specific requirements for residential incentives. Uh, and then there'd be a section in LCR that would have similar policy statements and and there would be uh, a specific requirement associated with a specific tool, but it was actually meant to apply generally. So it'd be listed in two or three different locations. Um, so we we reformatted all of those to be general guidelines uh that apply to every incentive project, residential-specific and industrial-specific um items in there. And then um, the overview of tools and incentives in the appendix, uh, that remains largely unchanged uh because a lot of that is driven off of state statute uh through there. So if you look at the document. Well, uh, and then we clarified the application and review process, uh, really to match with our current process as to how we're handling things. Um, and then the last kind of big thing, there, the document was uh about 55 pages before uh because the appendix included a community profile, uh, a sample funding agreement and and some other things that really change on a regular basis. Uh, so we removed those from the policy with the thought process being that those are supporting documents, they're absolutely important, important and tell the overall picture of the community. Um, however, those are uh better served with uh updates to the website, regular, regular communications and how that gets displayed through there. So um, that's a high level overview. I'd be happy to talk specifically about any, anything or pull up any of the information.
Thank you, Mr. Eelm. A couple of questions that I had, kind of going back to what what I think is really one of the most consequential parts of the document. And sorry, I just got turned around on where it is. Um, but it's basically the area where we take the, what we used to have under LCR kind of exclusively and we're really, that kind of framework has become the guiding, if you will, set of principles for. Yep, that's. This is really, the way I look at this is, this is this is what a uh, a developer coming in is, and what I I assume as on a staff level, you're, you're working through these kind of very things. Like, hey, your project, does it, where do you, where do you check the boxes is is the, maybe the, is that, would that be the conversation you might be having with them?
Yes, um, that would be one of the several conversations that we would have. We go specifically look at the targeted areas. Um, look at what we're trying to achieve, uh, and then look at the general policy statements uh on here. And and part of these general policy statements, the very first one on there you can see is the reimbursement ratio. Uh, that is one of the changes that we had. We made it very clear that that is a consideration that the the city council utilizes. And then if you go through the rest of this list, it's consistency with the comprehensive plan, the public benefits. When incentives should be requested, uh, that was another, another item there. Number four, uh, if a project requires the approval, approval of a preliminary development plan, any intent to seek incentive shall be known, made known to city staff and city council prior to any action being taken by the city council on the preliminary development plan. Um, that was a policy clarification through there. And the reason why it's specific to preliminary development plan uh is because not all applications require preliminary development plans. Areas already zoned, uh, for industrial, for example, there's, there's no preliminary development plan requirement for that, uh, so that may not be a step in the process. And so you can see on here as well that uh this goes for a little while. And then we get into um, specific consideration for residential projects. Many of these were already in the policy. Uh, they were just kind of in a different section uh through there. And then uh, the addition of the discussion on industrial projects. And that is, again, most favorable consideration, uh, projects that request abatement no more than 50%. Uh, that was in the existing guidance. Uh, we just made it a little bit more clear that those would be the ones favorable consideration. As you can see here, there's 10 or so different considerations there. 12 total.
Thanks. And it's a lot to digest. Um, so a couple of things, as I was kind of reviewing it again. One is just a specific question. I know one of them on the more general uh criteria that we're looking for is wanting the developer to have, you know, 15% of equity in the in the actual project, not sourced from a a private loan. Uh, and I just, I don't know that we talk, I don't ever hear, I can't say that I don't ever hear about that, but I, it seemed like as I was going back through it again, I thought, well, I, I don't know that I hear about that very often when we, when we talk about it. And so I was just curious what kind of conversations are had on that. So company equity under, under the industrial projects is where this, that is located. Also, I guess a provision under, I think it may be under the LCR. That's kind of carried over from LCR and and is that something that is often discussed? Uh, at staff level when you're dealing with an applicant?
Yes, yeah, we we do get into kind of their capital stack uh as to how they're planning on financing the project. Uh, and uh, Mr. Bushak may have a little bit more details that he can provide on that specific item there. Uh, the, the thought process being that if a project was 100% um financed, uh, it'd be challenging to actually get the financing on it and the level of commitment of the.
David Bushak, Chief Counsel of Economic Development and Planning. I can provide a little more context for that. The 15% rule is, I would say that's a, a good general rule of thumb for cities, other cities that I've worked with. That's kind of the rule of thumb that the firm that I used to work for and in in my line of work with those other cities. That's, that was sort of the recommendation. The idea is to encourage it, it goes a lot to the size of the company, the company's capabilities. So at any point where we were, where we see a project budget, there's usually three components to the project budget. How much the developer's putting in in their own cash, that's the equity piece. How much the developer's incurring as loans and then how much the developer's relying on third parties to build part of the project. So as a point of example, um, think of a large shopping center project and they may have a grocer that comes in and a multifamily component and a bank and a restaurant and so forth. A lot of those other users bring their own cash, whether it's their own equity or a bank loan to the project. So what we're looking at in that situation is of the total project budget, how much cash is this developer putting in? How much are they incurring in loans to usually develop the site? And then how much are they relying on from the multifamily component, the grocery store, the bank, the restaurant to bring their own separate cash, whether it's equity or loans from that component to the project? And if we can achieve 15% from that developer, that's a good, that's a good working standard.
There, I don't recall a time where we've had a discussion here where you've brought to our attention a you, generally speaking, staff has brought to our attention, project where that objective hasn't been met.
Yeah, so, so a couple of thoughts on that. One is, that is the type of analysis that that typically occurs. One is, that is the type of analysis that typically occurs at the staff level. So when we're initially reviewing a project budget, there's a lot of analysis and feedback that goes into staff's review of the project before it ever gets to the city council, even the conceptual presentation. For example, developer approaches the city, makes an incentive request, submits their modeling. It's eventually the modeling that you see when they're making their conceptual presentation. Personally, I provide a tremendous amount of feedback to those developers before it even crosses the threshold to get to the conceptual presentation. So it's common, I mean, you could ask some of the, some of the developers and developer attorneys that stand here at the podium before you, they will receive many points of, of analysis, but from me to their initial modeling, and that type of analysis is one of the many points that we review to make sure that the developer, ultimately, the concern that I have on behalf of the city is, does the developer have the financial wherewithal to make this project happen? So for a lot of the known developers, shopping center developers, large industrial developers, it's really not a concern, and we know that they're putting plenty of their equity on the table. But for those projects where we don't know the developer, we have questions, that factor along with many other factors come into play in our review of the project before you even see it.
And with this, and I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not super enamored or focused on this, although this is, this is the one provision I'm talking with you about right now, but it's, it's located in the industrial projects element. But is this a factor you're, you're bringing up and talking about in other non-industrial projects?
We can, it can come up. The example of the shopping center where a developer's proposing a package of incentives, and usually, if you recall, from some of our larger shopping center projects, could include TIF, could include a CID, might include a chapter 100 component, might include an L C R A component. And the analysis that we undertake, again, before the project gets to you is, does the budget look such that this developer can actually do the project? Do they have some skin in the game, so to speak, with their equity component? So that, that analysis, like I said, a lot of it typically happens before you ever see it. And if it was genuinely, like if a project ever got to a point where that, along with other points in the policy, policy concerns were an issue, one of two things would probably be happening then. Either the project wouldn't be moving forward until we're comfortable with it, or, this is extremely rare, I think, if we were still uncomfortable when it got to you, we'd be pointing that out. And that's, like I said, that's extremely rare because most of the projects are vetted thoroughly enough from the staff's perspective that we're comfortable allowing it to move forward.
Which we appreciate. I, I appreciate, I'm not speaking for everybody else, but I certainly know I appreciate that. That is something I always, when I talk to citizens, I always speak about the good work that you all do before it even comes to us. I appreciate that. So I'm going to maybe ask a question or two related to this because it's, I mentioned that it's, it's in the industrial section, and I know in the red line, there was a comment about having a section on commercial and mixed use. And I, and I'm a new addition to the C E D C, and forgive me if I should have brought this up last time, if it was discussed, I don't really remember. But is there a reason we didn't also do one for, do a section for that? Or, and, and sorry, I'm going to ask another question in relation to that. Couldn't it be said that many of those else, many of the industrial guidelines really are ones we're applying to all of them, commercial projects, if you will, if I could lump commercial and industrial together?
I would say that generally, yes, all of these can be looked at. They could carry different weights, though, if you will, based off of the type of the project. For example, a, you know, commercial mixed use project such as a streets of West Prior, you know, job creation on that is a consideration, however not, wasn't the, a driving factor. Whereas on a, an industrial project, job creation becomes a much, much bigger factor. That is an overall goal, job creation overall. So it's really more, is there a different focus for a different project type? But any of these can be considered with every project overall. And, and I think the, the reason for not having the commercial mixed use is because when we sat down and started thinking about, well, what would we be looking at? It ended up being the same thing that you would have for the general requirements and the same thing that you would have for the residential requirements, excuse side of things. I'm not saying that it can't be added to because it definitely can't.
Yeah, and that's where I'm kind of going now is I was like, should we, and I know we're, we've already gone through committee and I'm, we're looking at it now, this is our last chance to, to make comments or adjustments. Would that be appropriate inclusion where for, for the, for the reader, there, you know, we're trying to make this easier for them, the applicant, so that they don't have a question like, oh, does these all apply, but I don't see commercial mixed use? So that's my question is, do you relabel the industrial provision and just say that consider, you know, consideration criteria for industrial projects, consider for industrial and commercial or mixed use product, projects? Or is that lumping too much?
I think, I think that's lumping too much and we're being less targeted personally. But I, I mean, I don't see any reason why we couldn't look at expanding that a little I think that the general policies that really are applicable to everything cover the commercial and mixed use at this point moving forward. Also, the policy is pretty clear that we want, we want everybody to do as much due diligence as they can, but we also want them to be comfortable talking to us as staff so we can help with the process as much as possible, as early as possible. So the, the policy guidance is really so they can do due diligence on their own and get to a comfort level to where they're, they're willing to have the conversation with us as staff, and then we can walk them through any of the additional steps.
And like you said, I, I don't think I'm going to object to approving this today. Basically, as it's written, I do think it's probably worth it to, to surface the conversation of commercial and mixed use projects are different. We're highlighting residential, we're highlighting industrial, but we don't highlight those. So should we, should we have a section that's unique to that if we were to make a further revision at some later date? Related to all of these general policies and the specific projects, do you all as staff keep an internal like scorecard of sorts that, or would this be a helpful thing that says, okay, for these, for this project, here's, you know, items one through 13, right? And it scores well on items one through three and seven through 10. And clearly, because it's a mixed use project, it's not going to score, or it's a, you know, like you were saying earlier, there's some projects that just aren't going to score well on job creation because it's really meant for multifamily or some other different consideration. While if you had a purely industrial project, it would score much higher on, on that provision. So my question is, do you have, keep like a scorecard to help you all kind of track all these things for an applicant? Or, and in addition to that, is that something that if it was kept, could it be something we can look at at some later date when you're presenting and saying, okay, this kind of project scores well on these items and maybe one reason for granting the applicant's application?
Yeah, currently, we don't have a process where we go through line by line and develop a scorecard, as you will. We do have the applicant, as well as ourselves, look at the criteria and the policy and talk about how this particular project meets the intent of the policy through there. And you've noticed, you probably noticed a little bit of that coming in more in the presentations as well from a conceptual incentive request and the actual incentive request as well, highlighting how they do fit the policy. But as far as, you know, having all, every criteria with a checkbox, yes or no, we haven't gone that far.
So one thought I'll add to that is, it's probably three thoughts I have. One is, I frequently actually do that in the materials that I have prepared when a presentation is being made to you. And in the event that anybody asks me, how does this compare to our policy? I'm prepared to pull that sheet out and show you what I've highlighted. So I actually kind of do that, but I only respond with, on those points when requested because number two, we've talked about this in the past, I don't want to be perceived as a proponent or trying to advance the developer's cause. And we typically tell the developer, we recommend that you look at the policy and you talk to the city council about how you meet these policy objectives. But I'm prepared to do that typically when, you know, if that question comes to us. And then third, I have actually done that at the committee level, for example, in front of the L C R A Board of Commissioners. I will go through the policy, and it's very common that there's, there's no single project that meets every one of those criteria because it's often the case that based on the nature and the facts of the project, a lot of those, some of those just don't apply. But some of them really do, and we talk about that with the L C R A board, we have in the past. We don't do it across the board. We could do that a bit more, but I'm typically ready to talk about those if you want to hear that.
Getting all kinds of good attention on this.
Yeah, Councilmember Fucker. I think the only, the only tool that I can think of where we have a spreadsheet with some criteria is through the L C R A when we first reactivated the L C R A and we were only using what we call the Certificate of Qualification for Tax Abatement, a specific tool, that we could evaluate projects and track, right? What, what are, where are we hitting the marks? And there were certain values assigned to that. That tool's still in place, but we haven't seen an L C R A Certificate of Qualification for Tax Abatement project, only that tool come through since probably 2018. But that still exists.
Okay. Thank you, each one of you for your responses on that. And I, I, part of my thinking as I'm going through this is, we are, we are very, and the city is very fortunate to have you all. You're awesome at what you do. And I, I, and we rely on your talents and your abilities. I also know that when you're administering an organization, kind of having a checklist of sorts can end up being the, the failsafe that you rely on. So if something were to ever happen to one of you and we don't have that, your internal set of resources to bring to the table, having something that says, hey, you know what? We've taken the policy and we've put it in a checklist of sorts. Again, I'm just using that or scorecard, however, that allows some other person who may be in your shoes to go through and say, hey, you know what? I've done the due diligence and here's the way I've done it. I also realize the point of try not to be a proponent, and I appreciate that distinction. That's very, a very good one. So I'm not sure how to balance that. But, and I thinking, just from a, the standpoint of trying to, to make sure you, again, you cover all those bases, if, again, my thinking is if there was ever a time where one of you were not here to do that, we'd want to sure, sure make sure that whoever fills in that gap can do so and have maybe a tool to come back to. So just a thought, maybe that's helpful, maybe not. And I don't know that I, I'm certainly not insisting on it from my vantage point, but it might be something that could be helpful. So thank you, everybody, for your comments. And Mayor, I appreciate the time.
Thank you. Councilmember Shields?
Mayor, so I don't recall if it was at city council or at a committee meeting, but at one point, we talked about the possibility of an impact fee, something to offset the loss with the use tax and sales tax when we get those requests. And I was just wondering if that discussion came up in this, is that, is this document the place for something like that? Or would it be a different discussion that we'd have go through council committee at some point?
So the, the discussion with that did come up at C E D C, and it was really, we felt that that would be a schedule of fees item because we have several other fees related to economic development and issuance fees essentially that would be handled through the, the schedule of fees on an annual basis and not necessarily a, a policy item.
Okay.
Yes, and so to, to add to that, I think that's one of the next steps we're going to be looking at. It's issuance fee, impact fee is something different. You may hear about that in a different context in the not too distant future, but what we're looking at is restructuring the issuance fees specifically for the projects that result in tax abatement. So it'd be the tax abatement issuance fee. And the feedback from the committee was, yes, look into increasing that. So we're comparable to some of our neighboring cities, including Kansas City, and we definitely will be doing that next.
Questions? Thank you, Mayor.
Other questions? And thanks for diving into that, the C E D C and staff. Good discussion. If I'm seeing no further comment, I'm going to call for the vote, so please cast your All votes are in, please record the vote. And it passes eight zero. Councilmember Edson, would you please read it for adoption?
Thank you, Mayor. I move for adoption of bill number 23-151, an ordinance amending the economic development incentive policy for the city of Lee Summit, Missouri.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt bill number 23-151 by Councilmember Edson, seconded by Mayor Pritim Lopez. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It's adopted unanimously. Thank you. Going to propose ordinance's first reading. Councilmember Felker, would you please read bill number 23-152?
Certainly, Mayor. I move to advance to second reading, bill number 23-152, an ordinance approving the execution of the funding approval agreement by and between the city of Lee Summit, Missouri, and the U S Department of Housing and Urban Development for the 2023 to 2024 Community Development Block Grant Program year.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, bill number 23-152 by Councilmember Felker, seconded by Councilmember Edson. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. Passes eight zero. That will take us to committee reports. Yes, Councilmember Shields?
Thank you, Mayor. We had a great finance and budget committee meeting yesterday. I want to thank Councilmember Edson for, for filling in as our alternate so we had our quorum. We started our discussion of the fund balance reserve policy, and so we're going to be continuing that discussion over the next couple of months and hopefully bringing some possible revisions to council towards the end of the year. So I just wanted to have everyone be aware of that because I know it's been a big topic on a lot of our minds for quite some time. So hopefully make some, some progress this year.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Edson?
Thank you, Mayor. We have C E D C tomorrow here at five o'clock. And Mayor, I just appreciate you moving the bylaws for the DMO to committee for us to discuss before we bring it to council, and that's what we'll be discussing. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you. Remember tomorrow?
Thank you, Mayor. We had a, via Zoom, we had a legislative and legislative meeting, legislative and governmental affairs meeting yesterday on Zoom, and we went over the, the legislative priorities and thanking Councilmember Shields for filling in so we would have a quorum there. Also, a good idea from the alternate was to add language about our concern about the landfill on our legislative priorities, so the legislators would be reminded one more time of, of the need for swift and positive action, positive being in our, in the community's favor, I should say, not just our favor, but our community's favor. And then on the 14th, which is Monday, we will have a public works meeting at 4:30 P. M. in, in the chambers.
The works is when?
14th, Monday.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, next go, next is council comments. Councilmember Pryor?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say that I think the number of appeals is closer to 54,000 now.
Is it really?
Yeah, I think that's what it closed out on the 31st, closer to 54, 55. You're welcome.
Want to be accurate when I talk about that.
Yeah, thanks.
Staff roundtable, Mr. Dunning?
Yeah, just a few, kind of related to Mr. Durham's report here. So Senate Bill 190, I've got, received an email from legislature, Jackson County legislator Sean Smith. The Legislature Budget Subcommittee is hosting a public hearing to consider an ordinance that would then put in effect the property tax freeze, if you will, for seniors. So that, that's occurring at the county level. That, that is occurring Monday, August 14th, at their, at their meeting. It doesn't tell me a time, but on, on Monday, August 14th, a public hearing on that matter. Senate Bill 190 is what that is related to. And then following up on the Missouri State Highway Patrol funding and the interchange funding, we do have that information that we will certainly get to Mr. Durham, certainly happy to recirculate that to you. certainly happy to recirculate that to you all. But the city's carrying a lion's share of the funding for that interchange and, and an equal amount on, on the Highway Patrol relocation. But I'd be happy to get that out to you and we will certainly get that to Mr. Durham just as a reminder. Yeah.
Wouldn't you, wouldn't you say that they, if, if they're saying that they didn't have that information, they were deflecting because they know that we're, we're ante-ing up tremendously on this?
Yeah, we know we delivered that when we made trips to Jeff City. So it's information we can recirculate.
Been working on it for what, four years, more? Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes. That's Member Pryor.
In a situation like that, I know he said that we'd have to wait till like next budget year to potentially ask for more money. But on something like that, if we went ahead and went ahead with it and then omitted the shooting range, I think, like, like you had mentioned, then when a new governor's reelected, can we hit them up like for the, does it, can it work that way or can it not work that way?
Yeah, we go every year making asks. I mean, and when we get, when we have a win like we did with the 10 and a half million a couple of years ago, we still go in and make our ass the next year because everybody else, I mean, it's, it's, like I said, it's kind of part of the process. And, but I am surprised that, I mean, Mr. Head, aren't you surprised he didn't allocate more money out of that $2 billion surplus?
I can't say that I'm terribly surprised because I think there's more interest in cutting taxes than there is in spending money.
Well, I understand that, but the governor has constantly talked about infrastructure and that's, that's what we're making requests for. And workforce development, which we do stunningly well in Lee Summit.
He mentions a lot about supporting public safety and Highway Patrol, which you'd think if he truly supported Highway Patrol, then you'd want to fund them and have a good building. But I don't know, I would, I guess, but I'm not the governor, so.
Have you been in that building, Mr. Dunning? Highway Patrol building?
Yeah.
Yes. When?
Oh, it's been probably over 15 years ago.
It was pretty outdated back then.
Yes, it was.
15 years ago. You talk about outdated, Councilmember Pryor, that building's outdated.
It was outdated, yeah. My husband's grandpa was, I think, second in command over the Highway Patrol and it was outdated a long time ago. It's even more so now, so, yeah.
Well, we're just, all we can do is keep plugging away and doing our part. And I think we're doing a great job at that and staff has worked really hard on it. And I think we're gonna get it done because the Highway Patrol is gonna work with us maybe. All right. Well, we don't get to adjourn because we have a closed session. Would you please, Mr. Councilmember Demaro?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Pursuant to Section 610021 of the Revised Statutes of the State of Missouri pertaining to legal actions, causes of action, or litigation involving a public, public governmental body and any confidential or privileged communication between a public governmental body or its representatives and its attorneys in pursuant to Section 610021 of the Revised Statutes of the State of Missouri pertaining to the leasing, purchase, or sale of real estate by a public governmental body where public knowledge of the transaction might adversely affect a legal consideration. Therefore, I move for closed session.
Second?
Thank you. I have a motion moving to closed session by Councilmember Demaro, seconded by Councilmember Shields. Discussion? Thinking none, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Demaro?
Aye.
Councilmember Shields?
Aye.
Councilmember Edson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryor?
Aye.
Councilmember Hodges?
Aye.
Councilmember Felker?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Jim Lopez?
Aye.
Mayor Baird?
Aye. Everyone, have a good night.